April sixteenth meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Gibson is absent. Dr. Orth, Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nakosha?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Before we go to the invocation and pledge, I'd just like to say that Mr. Gibson is not able to make it tonight because he had a family medical emergency that he's dealing with now. Mr. Nakosha, would you please leave us an invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Our most kind grace have thy Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and conduct the business of Gloucester County. God, we ask that you keep your hand upon Mr. Gibson and his family as they go through this time, and that he knows that he has the support of this board. God, we ask that you bless the county and keep us safe. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from November thirtieth and December fifth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's no consent agenda. Next item is matters presented by the board. Ms. Nakosha.
Mr. Chair, on last Monday, I met with the Transportation Director, referenced the warehouse road and issue and the adjourning roads there. She took me through the entire process. She also took me through the changes that she has made to secure, make it a more secure environment for that student. One of the things that we talked about doing is myself and Ms. Deckard and Danny from Hodges and Bryant getting together and having a conversation about making an adjustment down by his business, if he will, to kind of help them out. And I told her I would facilitate that conversation, but at this point, we are waiting for that to come together. But there has been an adjustment made, according to the Transportation Director, to better suit the needs of that student. They were aware of what was going on, and she had been down there, and some of her staff had been down there. She met with me, and she showed me what was going on and what she intended on doing. So the next step now is to, for all the parties involved, that could potentially make it even better to get together and have a conversation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. County Administrator items. Ms. Steele.
Just wanted to share the good news that we have officially gone four quarters or an entire year with a no deficiency letter that we received on our old landfill. So Mr. Baines and his work and with FM and Environmental has really turned that situation around and gotten more air moving and things working, so we're very happy with that. Also, we will be, mainly be Mr. Baines and Mr. Wright, but hosting the deputies, assistants, and others, sometimes department heads and others that are looking to go up the ladder, come to a meeting twice a year, and Gloucester will be hosting that this Friday, and our Chair will be there to welcome everybody, and excited about having those folks come into town. I think there's 26 coming from all over the state.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, we'll move to citizen comment period. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Diane Jones. I'm from the Ware District. I'd like to thank Mr. Nakosha for his diligent efforts about the roadwork that needs to be done on Edge Hill Street. And in a way of review, you had a town hall for which citizens were allowed to speak, and yet you talked over Mrs. Carter, argued with her, and dismissed her, basically. I didn't speak at that meeting because my comments would have been less than enjoyable for you than even hers were. You also did not open in prayer. You did not say the Pledge of Allegiance at the town hall. And I'd like to thank you that you please take diligent care of the taxpayers' money. A lot of us are retired now and cannot afford to have our real estate taxes increased.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Would anyone else like to speak? Ms. Cronin, do we have anybody? So now we'll move to the work session agenda. Budget discussion. Ms. Callaway or Ms. Steele?
I'll introduce while she's walking up. We're going to go over a number of changes and things that we've mentioned at the last couple of meetings. I did want to point out that probably the most significant thing that you're going to see tonight is that while we've been discussing what the county administrator contingency amount should be, we are proposing to reduce it. We had discussed about $500,000. We've reduced it to $250,000. And the main reason for this is, we've said all along, we intend to not need it, not use it, hopefully, but if we need it, it's there. I know that if, for some reason, there's something catastrophic that happens, I'd just come back to the board. The other main reason is that it is, we are having to use one-time money this time. It's different than previous years where we're having to spend money that will not be in the budget next year. So by reducing that contingency to $250,000, it reduces the overall budget amount and reduces the amount of those funds. And again, I know we've got reserves if something bad happens, so appreciate all the consideration that was given on that. And I'm going to turn it over to Maria, who's got lots for you.
Yes. Good evening. So this evening, you have a handout in front of you, hopefully, that Ms. Cronin provided. This is a four-page handout that details all of the budget changes that have happened since the original proposed budget. So I'm just going to go over this handout briefly, and then we, of course, have budget resolutions as well. So the first page of the handout that you have lists by fund the total proposed budget originally, and then any revisions, and then the final summary of the revised proposed, which is what our budget resolutions are based off of. Each revision there that is shown in a lump sum is detailed on the pages that follow. So I will not go through each of those by fund in summary, but I'll go through them in detail. Also, at the bottom of this summary is a use of fund balance for operating detail. So it's got the numbers of fund balance that we are using in this budget for operating uses. As you can see, it's the $746,000 number that we talked in detail about at the last meeting. And as Ms. Steele has pointed out, we've revised the county administrator contingency to decrease that by $250,000, and our new total use of fund balance for operating uses is $496,000. So if you go to the next page, that top section of the general fund changes is what was presented last Monday at the work session. However, you will notice I did a little bit different format and split those columns out because I noticed that the singular column was very difficult to follow. So the only difference here is there's a revenue and an expense column. However, it all nets to that $2,287 that we saw last time. That $2,287 was allocated $923 to Bay Aging per the last budget meeting, and then the remainder was netted with vacancy savings, and that was the $1,364 that's towards the bottom. So everything in that bottom section is any changes that have been made since we provided this sheet to you. So at the top, you'll see the $250,000 that we just mentioned for county administrators' contingency, a small $200 fluctuation, just getting the postage in the right place between the Commissioner and the purchasing offices. And then the final number there is $77,000 that's requested to carry forward for the comp plan. So that is money that is in this year's budget and not expecting to be spent, so we're requesting to pull that forward. And that's a summary of general fund. The next one is school operating fund, so we're on the third page now. This is a little unusual because generally, we don't see details of the school operating fund, but what the state did is unusual in this circumstance, and they sent the schools multiple years of funding for the all-in spending plan all at one time. So what we're asking here is just a revision to carry that money over into next year so that they can spend it how they're supposed to spend it next year. Next is social services. These are all items that we discussed in the last meeting. We did a very detailed review of the social services budget, which resulted in some reductions of just some things that we aligned our percentages and came out with about $70,000 of a decrease. And you can see there that $34,000 of that is general fund transfers, and then there's a split between the state and federal revenue as well. The American Rescue Plan Act, so that's an ongoing, these are all carryovers of existing projects. And that's $31,000 in the share of bonuses, $878,000 for pump station number 11, membranes of RO Skid One for $268,000, the broadband ARPA project for $364,000, and then all of that is just fund balance that will be carried forward from that ARPA money. Then we have the capital plan, several projects here, school security improvements. This is something the board appropriated last fiscal year. We're just asking to carry that forward. Some of it has been spent. The VODI portion of the broadband project, a portion of that, and then the FEMA grants. You'll hopefully be seeing a bid go out soon for several houses that we're hoping to really get moving on construction of those homes soon. And then the Beaver Dam Floating Dock, which we're a little nervous about getting it done right on time in June 30, just due to ordering things and getting bids out, so we're thinking that's probably going to end up being maybe a July project. So all of those items are offset with their respective funding sources that's down on the left-hand side. Lastly, on this page, we have the school construction fund. We all know the high school is under renovation, and that was an anticipated carryover requested by the schools based on their year-to-date numbers. So next, we had some slight revisions in the opioid abatement fund. So we have applied for a grant that is a cooperative grant with the Northern Neck Regional Jail, so we're accounting for that money, as well as we've received some updated revenue estimates for opioid money, so those are accounted for there.
Mr. Bizani.
Ms. Callaway, real quick question on the school.
Yes.
The prior page. Have you heard anything from the finance or the construction manager for the school on the new renovated high school as to whether they're going to be over contract or under their contract price? Have you heard anything like that?
We meet regularly with them, and I'll let Ms. Steele add any additional comments, but we meet at least monthly with the Chief Financial Officer, as well as the project manager, Mr. Hartley, to discuss this. And we don't see, it's still, we keep getting, it's still too early to tell, but we are monitoring it very closely, and I'll let Ms. Steele add a few.
When's the estimated completion date on this whole project?
September of '25, I think.
September '25, okay. That's good.
All right. So lastly is the utilities fund. These are all ongoing projects that are budgeted in the current year that we're requesting to move forward. And you can see towards the bottom, there's a small where we've reduced the health insurance costs that, as we mentioned in the last meeting, so total adjustment there, totals $955,000. Are there any questions on these budget revisions?
Mr. Crisco.
On page one, the reductions, the 161, 333, and the $70,000, 676, where is that money going in the budget?
So if you go to the next page, that is a overall change in the total number, so that's on both sides of the budget. So the 161, 333 is the total of the $11,667 plus the 250, well, minus the 250, and then plus the $77,000. So that all nets to the $161,000. So it's not just one side of the budget where we have additional revenue.
No, I, okay, thanks for that, but I'm still then trying to figure out then why we're still using 246, 984 to budget if we are looking at, just trying to figure this out here, it's not making sense to me, where if we have total general fund, final budget changes, 161, 333 to the good, I would think that we would use that to reduce the amount that we're using to balance the budget.
So that is on both sides. So the way we budgeted county administrator contingency, that was both a revenue and an expense. So when we reduce that $250,000, we use less fund balance, and we also reduce the expense side, so that's less opportunity to spend.
But isn't this the total right now is 161, 333 to the good, or is that not the case? Because what I'm seeing is, we shouldn't still be using 247 to balance the budget on the front sheet if, on the second sheet, we are showing 161, 333 to the positive.
That's not to the positive or to the negative, it's just a change in the bottom number of both the revenue and expense sides of the budget. Because that county administrator contingency change was both a revenue decrease and an expenditure decrease, because we had it budgeted as a fund balance revenue and an expense side for the contingency. Same, Ms. Steele may be able to unaccountant that.
I know it was confusing at the last meeting because it kept saying it's like a balance because it's there both times, but when it's, you're still relying on fund balance to, as the source for it, but the, so spending less of it, the overall budget is less. But is, you know, I kept trying to say it last time, is it's on both sides, and it is on both sides. But it's less of, the budget in total budget went down by $250,000. But it also, the revenue went down by $250,000. So it was a balancing act before, it's a balancing act now. The reason that we went ahead and did it, though, is because, the main reason is because we were using fund balance to come up with that money, so to not have to rely on, if you think, if you look at the bottom line of...
Ms. Steele. I think Mr. Crisco's question is, if you look at the original proposed, is 85, 403, and it's gone to 85, 242.
That's in total, on revenues and expenditures decreased. So if we were to have additional revenue that we found, but we, and then we reduce the expense of county administrator contingency, then yeah, we would actually have additional money to spend or use less fund balance. But because we had $500,000 of CA contingency budgeted for expenses, for spending, and $500,000 of fund balance budgeted for county administrator contingency, we reduced both of those by $250,000. So it didn't make a net impact to the budget, but it made an overall bottom line impact on both revenues and expenses.
Why, why would, why, if you reduced expenses by $250,000, I'm still not interested how this 161 would not be a positive.
So we reduced expenses by 250, but we all, our revenue source was fund balance, so we reduced our use of fund balance by $250,000.
I think it's because, well, they're, I think, and I'm not an accountant, technically...
I'm trying to make it as...
Is, they're saying we're not going to use as much fund balance.
Right.
So that's why you don't have extra money.
But you're taking out the expense.
Because you're saving money, but you're not going to spend as much from the fund balance.
Yeah, but you took out $250 from the expense side.
And also from the revenue side.
Accountants always have to make revenue and expenses equate. I'm not sure why they have to do that.
So we could use, do...
No assets and liability and stockholder's equity have to balance. That's the balance sheet.
So a budget is, but, so what we could do, maybe where you're thinking, is keep the same level of fund balance spending in the revenue side and reduce county administrator contingency by $250,000, and that would give you another $250,000 to put in other expenses. So we've just reduced the use of fund balance in the budget as a revenue source, so that...
Right. I understand what you're saying. It makes sense. The issue, though, is you're, there's, if I was to total what you've given me on this sheet number one...
Yes.
Then I would have 400, hold on, $482,000, or $482,009 that I have reduced my expenditures by. Because I'm reducing the general fund by 161, 333, plus an additional $71,000, I would think that that total in revisions at the bottom would should go to 250 plus 232.
I am missing your numbers there. Did you catch that?
I'm sorry, I missed the other part. I thought by...
All the numbers in parentheses added up should be 482, 009.
If you look at how...
First sheet.
Right, but the 161, that's what's saying, that, you see the 250 is shown on both? So the 161 incorporates 250 plus, 250 minus.
It doesn't on the front sheet.
It, that 161 is detailed on the second sheet, which does include the $250,000 on both sides.
This is just a use of fund balance. It's just an explanation of how the fund balance is being used. It wouldn't be added, correct? It would not be added to the top.
That section at the bottom is a totally independent use of fund balance.
It's just showing you how we're using fund balance.
That 250 is not to be added independently. And if there's a better way to present that, we can work on that in the future.
Is this an income statement issue?
This, so this is a budget. So it's, so the budget is going to balance. If you've got, you know, the 80 million in expenses, and then we're going to find those revenue sources. So that's a little different from an income statement, yeah. And I guess if I were to equate it to my home, if I'm going to use a, you know, $1,000 in my mortgage, and I've got to use $1,000 of my savings account, if I decide I'm only going to pay half my mortgage, I'm just going to use half my savings account. I'm not going to say, I'm still going to use $1,000 out of my savings and just pay half of my, you know, so that's where I'm talking about it. It's an even, on both sides, we reduce that contingency, and we also reduce the overall use of fund balance. I was going to say, we do have the, I do have a copy of the budget work document. If you'd like to see the spreadsheet in live, I can, we can pull that up as well if that, you think that would be helpful.
The last version we saw from last time. That might help.
Okay.
To see where those numbers are going and where to...
If you look at the second page, I think it's helpful in seeing where the numbers, where the money's going. And if you look at the third page, that's where the social services, 700, $70,000, 676 is going for that number.
I think what we're hung up on is how the 161 manifests itself in revenue and expenses.
Well, part of the revenue is the $171,570 for the veterans' relief, and then we had an increase with the state comp board.
Right. If you just look at the revenues, we had a loss of anticipated revenue from the original budget, and we had a gain of anticipated revenue, and that totaled to $11,667 to the good. And then we, all the different minor changes that were made on the expense side resulted in a $9,000 addition of expenses. So when you take those two, that 11 minus the 9, you get the 2287, which is where we were on Monday, and out of that 2287, you all had wanted to give the additional money to Bay Aging. And the only other things that changed, again, was a plus and minus on the, both in the carryover funds and also in the postage, and then the contingency. So...
I got it now. The one row was throwing me off.
Yeah, which one? Because I make sure I don't do that again.
The use of fund balance.
Just put use of fund balance on its own sheet.
Okay.
Then that wouldn't, that wouldn't have an issue.
Sure.
I was thinking it should have been a running total when that other row made it not a running total, and I just missed the row.
Yeah, that, and I apologize. This was a mishmash of how things are presented in the resolutions, and it was a, this is the first time that I've taken the stab at that, so we'll learn for next year.
No, it's not a problem now that I understand it.
Yeah, understood. Is there anything you'd like me to, no, okay.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, understood. All right, if there, no more questions? Is that what I...
She wants to sit down real quick.
No, I'm happy, you know, I can hang here all night. Prefer not to, but... All right, moving forward. So you have resolutions that were posted this evening, or today, but we also have revisions, and that would help as well, and I understand that, and we'll make sure that we do better next year, that you'll have this more in advance. The first resolution is the resolution approving the budget, and the two revisions on this document were two things that I inadvertently left out, and the American Rescue Plan Fund and the Capital Projects Fund that I just caught in reconciling this afternoon. So those two numbers are highlighted, those are the correct numbers, and they tie out to your detailed revision summaries. Should I go through each resolution first?
Mr. Chair, we approve each one?
We approve each one, yeah.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution on page 31, second.
Any comments, questions?
I was just, do you, would you like to say the, from the handout, since that doesn't have a page number on it, and the handout has the correct figures?
Yeah.
This, this one?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion.
Who's second?
My second.
That's one.
Second of the AM? Yeah.
Okay, but you need a second because it's amended.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? Before we get started, I want to say a couple things. I think it's asinine that we've set the rates without knowing the full needs of the county. We need to advertise higher rates in the future, because we've come down with, and I think they all deserve it, but we've, that's $172,000. It's over $700,000 the last couple of years that the revenue's been decreased as a result of the veterans' tax relief. We should never, ever use fund balance to balance our budget. Right now, it's $497,000. That next year, we're going to be short, starting out $497,000. And that should never be the case on a county our size. And I'm not saying we should have increased taxes or anything else, but we should have made ourselves... And I'm not saying we should have increased taxes or anything else, but we should have made ourself, given us the ability with an advertised higher tax rate to have changed it. But right now, one cent, as it says on the spreadsheets, 541,000 dollars. And we wouldn't have had to have used a full penny. But, you know, you look at the referendum, people didn't want a tax increase for capital funds. They didn't say anything about the needs of the county. And I think we need to be mindful because this year, it's going to be very difficult. Well, it's going to be easy to balance the budget this year because we're using fund balance. But next year, we're going to be in a hole already before we even start. And I just don't think that's very wise and prudent decisions for us to make.
That would be true unless we have increased revenues next year that would cover that, right? We have, you know, increased revenues that would cover that deficit.
We were planning on increased revenues this year to increase the deficit, but it hasn't. I mean, I've heard for years, people complain about the economy's getting ready to fall. You know, it, it's going to happen sometime, it might not happen. But we need to live right now and we're in a, I mean, we're going to be in a terrible bind next year. We're going to be, what, 500,000 dollars in the hole before we even start next year. And I have real issues with that. I just don't think we were prudent in our decision-making. And I know, I know we've talked about for next year, changing when we're going to advertise and when everything else. But we definitely need to hear from schools, we need to hear from state, county administrator. We can't sit there and listen and tell her that the rate's going to be this. We need to listen to the needs and what's actually required of the county to run before we make decisions. Any other comments or questions, Dr. Wirth?
No, I kind of agree. I think we knew going into the budget cycle that when we established the, the process, I distinctly remember you're saying we weren't going to raise taxes above 58.3. So you really kind of set the stage for that. And perhaps it would be wise for us to hold any comments regarding where we are with the budget until we really see more of the process and perhaps in setting the number or the dates for next year, we look very carefully at how we want to bring it to the schools. Because, you know, we have to take into consideration, they need their budget by May 15th. But, yeah, I think next year will be an interesting, challenging year. But again, we don't know what our revenue sources will be, we don't know whether it'll be up or down. I think, I was a little surprised, although we shouldn't have been, about the veterans. You know, that was a shocker to me and it's going to continue. And I don't know whether there's going to be any opportunity for the state to backfill some of that because we're not the only county, I'm sure, that are dealing with lost revenue because of that. I think it's a good deal for them, it's great, we don't take anything away from their service. But I think the counties need to recognize that it is a source of revenue that several years ago, we never thought it would be where we are today.
I know we're completely different size, but do you remember what Hampton said they were?
Hampton is down 6 million in revenue and James City County said they were down 3 million in revenue.
And I bet Virginia Beach is in that.
Don't know about York, I think Iowa White was close to it.
I'll make a bet, York's up there too because of the number of people that are there, so yeah.
Are the veterans' benefits means tested?
No.
Well, they, they do have to be 100% to say, but they have to bring that documentation in. But it's not means tested as far as their income levels.
I just, like I said, I think next year, regardless, we need to sit there and advertise at a rate where there is some flexibility.
Can we talk about some of these budget issues well before the budget process? So, you know, toward the end of the calendar year, is it possible that we bring some of these topics to the forefront, either in a retreat, so we don't find ourselves in a situation that Mr. Hudson is talking about?
I think we have a balancing act that I know we want to provide you what you're asking for. And we're going to do our best to fix the timing to be able to do that. But some of the constraints that we're facing is when we are forecasting revenue or forecasting expenses, the fewer months we have, the less we know them. And so if we meet in December or, and that's when we're meeting, we're still making adjustments constantly because you want every month you can. On the flip side, in speaking with the Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue, in order to get the bills out and timely, we don't want to push too far, too far out. I think they're like this week, next week kind of thing. They don't want it further back unless we totally change how we do things with the billing cycles, which may then have an impact on citizens that don't feel like they were given enough notice to pay their bills. So it, and at the state level, I mean, I heard the rumor, who knows? I mean, it's tomorrow night, I mean, tomorrow they have their meeting, but the rumor is they're going to throw it out and start all over again. So we may not have a budget until the fall or something again, or, or, you know, however it'll go. We'll go back to the governor's budget and if it does, that would, I don't, I mean, he did make some adjustments, but we still are, we have a lot less on the school side with his proposal, which means that the school board, when they're adopting their budget, they're going to have to be looking at 600,000 to 800,000 less than what they asked for unless the money comes in again to the General Assembly's. So all of it, it's a balancing act of when do you have the information? And I, and I know it, it sounds scary to the public that we're going to raise taxes if they only read the headline and they don't realize it's just an advertising rate. We can say it 1,000 times, but that doesn't mean people are going to understand it. They're going to say, oh, I heard they're raising the taxes. But I think that flexibility is needed and I've said it in the presentation and, and I hope the public is understanding that all of us are spending more money than we were a year ago. Everything costs more. So everything for the county costs more. And keeping up with that inflation sometimes does mean, I mean, we, if we don't have the additional revenue and in this case, we actually lost revenue. So it is a tough balancing act.
I think if we had not had the increase in our seals and sales and meals and lodging tax, it would have been a lot worse. I think we are very lucky to be a very, in a very positive position, you know.
That's what's, it's, this is the best kind, I mean, we're in a great situation, other than inflation. Obviously, that's making things go up, but we're doing really well. But yet, I think this is the, like, one of the worst budgets come forward since 2008.
We need a second daffodil festival.
We'll take everybody's money who wants to come and drop it, drop it here. I mean, you have a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Are you ready for the vote then? Okay, Dr. Wirth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson? Mr. Crisco? Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that, oh, I'm sorry. The next resolution is the ordinance setting the levies for calendar year 2024. These have not changed, there is no revision to this particular resolution. And it's the second page of your handout.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson? Mr. Crisco? Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia? Dr. Wirth? Motion carries.
The third resolution is the resolution appropriating funds for fiscal year 2025. This resolution ties in with the first that you approved, which is, which does have a couple of revisions. So this is page three of your packet. It's, it is modified since the board packet. So this is your handout, I apologize for that. And I will point out the couple of revisions. For, on page four of your handout, there are four highlighted numbers that have changed and those are just a result of the exact same items that I mentioned earlier. Otherwise, everything is the same as the budget.
Any questions?
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia? Dr. Wirth?
Yes.
The final resolution is found on the last page of your handout. However, this has not changed from the board packet, there are no revisions here. So this is the resolution establishing the rate of personal property tax relief. And actually, there was very little fluctuation in those values. So there, the percentage is the same at 22%, same as last year.
Any questions? Ms. Steele.
Mr. Crisco? Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia? Dr. Wirth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Okay, supervisor discussion. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Anything? All right. Mr. Wilmot, will you read us into closed session?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of April 16, 2024. And whereas the nature of the subject is discussion concerning the potential acquisition of real property for, for a public purpose and the prospect of business or industry pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3 and 2.2-3711A5. Now therefore be resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors is hereby convening in closed meeting for the purpose herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority herein reciting.
Second. Ms. Steele, will you poll the board?
Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia? Dr. Wirth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson? Mr. Crisco?
We're in closed session. Mr. Wilmot, will you read us back into open session?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting. And whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. And the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened. Now therefore be resolved by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors that it does hereby reconvene in open meeting at its meeting of April 16, 2024 and certifies the matter set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D.
So moved. Ms. Steele, will you poll the board?
Dr. Wirth? Mr. Smith? Mr. Hudson? Mr. Crisco? Mr. Bizani? Mr. Nikosia?
Anything else for the good of the county while we're here? Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.